Yes, Mr. Dogg cost, here's what the true cost is. But now I want him to tell us how much he's gonna charge us.
Well, I'm just, what we're gonna do is take it off here to amend this agenda to be added on a later date.
That's that.
Alright. Folks at this four thirty, wanna call the meeting to order, please? For public information, the copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted on the east wall of the Commissioners' Room. Roll call, please.
Meyer?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Knapper?
Here.
Rising?
Here.
Blue?
Here.
All rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution and its statements, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, on the approval of the agenda, one change that I know of is we're going to remove all discussion on the report on destroyed real property. And that'll be moved to a later date. Is there any other changes on the agenda, anybody has?
Give me just a minute to remember.
Okay. Do you have a motion for approval of the agenda as amended?
Sure.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Call the roll.
Harris?
Yes.
Knapper?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Rising?
Yes.
Okay, I do wanna remind everybody that the Board does reserve the right to enter to a closed session as per state law, if we feel that's necessary. Next item is the consent agenda, anybody like anything, anybody removed? Anything removed, not anybody, I'm sorry. If not, I'll...
I'll move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Record your votes.
Oh dear, sorry. I forgot what we were doing.
We haven't been using them.
Mike?
You wanna do a roll call, is that what you're saying?
No.
No, we haven't.
I don't, I haven't set up to do it this way, I just...
Okay, I need a motion to move in the Board of Equalization, please.
I approve that we move into the Board of Equalization.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Record your votes.
Just a minute, please. There you go. You have five yeses.
Okay, first, first item, discuss, consider approval of one motor vehicle exemption for Regional West Medical Center. Heather?
So I have one vehicle exemption for Regional West Medical Center. This is a new vehicle. The six-month tax loss because all of their vehicles come due in January is ninety-five dollars and seventy cents. This motor vehicle is used for facilities management at the hospital. So it's used for the purpose of transporting between facilities and working on the grounds.
Have a motion for approval or denial?
I move that we approve the motor vehicle exemption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Record your votes, please.
Here, we have five yeses.
Thank you. Next item discussed, consider extending the homestead exemption as per seventy-seven dash thirty-five twelve.
Good evening. I think I've been with you guys all day.
And your name is what, sir?
Mud.
Mud.
Do you have to speak to the statute too?
I think it was just mentioned.
I did.
Dan voted on it, though.
I know, that's what, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about it.
I'm asking him if he was representing it, or if we needed to take a roll call first.
Okay, you lost me. That's okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so, in your packet, you should've received a homestead that came in a couple of days late from a Mrs. Amelia Ramirez. And required by statute, which was referenced in seventy-seven dash thirty-five twelve, were required, the assessor's office is required to get the Board's approval for us to go ahead and accept it. She came to our window, she was very upset, she probably qualifies for a hundred percent homestead. I highly recommend that the Board approve it and allow me to process it with the homesteads this year. They're not turned in to the state until August first.
So what we would be doing is approving the late filing?
That's right.
I would move approve the late filing for Mrs. Amelia Ramirez.
This is in two separate actions?
Two separate actions. First one is discuss, consider extending the homestead exemption, which is the seventy-seven thirty-five twelve. So I need a motion to extend the homestead exemption.
I'll make a motion to extend the exemption.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Record your votes, please.
Okay.
Alright, now, who made the motion for the...
I did.
Russ made the motion, is there a second?
Yes.
A motion, a second, is there any further discussion? About what? About the motion?
The late filing.
No, this is on the exemption, this is on the exemption for Ramirez.
I made the motion to extend it.
Right, and we have a second, and I'm asking for discussion on that, on that motion.
I think we're confused.
Yes, I am.
Okay.
The first, the first motion was to extend.
Right.
To extend the homestead exemption, we did that, and then we had...
We don't have a motion yet for the second one.
Yeah, he made, he made the motion, Mike seconded it.
Go ahead.
Is that what you have recorded, Kelly? Alright, would you make a new motion, please?
I will, I'll make a motion to accept the homestead exemption.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Alright, now, is there any further discussion? Record your votes, please. Get them all, Kelly?
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you. Okay, the rest of them have been removed. We're down to discuss, consider approval of the over and under evaluation due to clerical error. We all got a copy of that.
That's this sheet here, Ken, this one right here.
Robert, you're on again?
Yes. So, like I said, you have a copy of the report, I have the signed one, and I'll give it to you, Ken, for signature, and we'll give it to Kelly. But this is the result of, and we've had this conversation, the assessor's office prior to this year had some flat value codes assigned to properties that would never change. So we have taken action to correct those. And also, in areas that were supposed to be calculated on a per-square-foot basis for land, there was sprinklings of per-acre in there with the, with the per-square-foot in neighborhoods, implanted neighborhoods, so we took action to correct those as well. And that's primarily the items on this report, as well as, you know, we also added a couple of lot size breaks in a couple of different neighborhoods, and that would be included in this as well. So it totals three point seven million dollars.
Okay. We've, we've had a lot of discussion on this over the last week and a half, or week and...
We have.
Whatever, so, I would entertain a motion for either approval or denial, please.
I move that we approve the over/under report.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Give me just a minute, please. I gotta skip past all of these other things. Okay, I'm ready for you to ask.
Okay, record your votes, please. And I can't tell the glare here, I don't know whether it made or didn't. Alright. Need the motion to come out of Board of Equalization, please.
I move we come out of Board of Equalization.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Record your votes.
Okay.
Alright. Roden Bridge, discuss, consider bids for Project C seventy-nine four fifty Bridge C zero zero seven nine two two eight one five R.
Good afternoon. I'm here a few months ago, as you recall, we awarded the bridge, Broadway, the West Broadway Bridge, for repair, which starts in December. This bridge here is the east bridge, it needs attention also. We bid this one out in hopes maybe we could, you know, piggyback the contractor that got the award for the west bridge to this one, and maybe get a good price. This one does not need the extensive work, the other one does. It's gonna be repairing some small concrete patches and potholes, and repairing the joints in the, in the bridge. The engineer's estimate was a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars. We received five bids today. The lowest bid coming from Garcia Chicoine of a hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty cents. They went up from there, as you can see on your sheet, the next lowest one was Brink Building of two oh eight. Emmy Collins had two twenty-two. Simons was at two eighty-five, and then Kia Constructors was at three fifteen.
Kia is the one doing the other?
Kia is the one doing the west one, so that kinda surprised me, actually.
So your recommendation is Garcia?
Is Garcia Chicoine? And Tim has worked with them down Lincoln Way, if you have any questions for him about the company, I'm sure you can answer them.
They're, where are they out of?
They're located out of Milford. And they sent me a list of projects they've done this season of similar type work. On I-80, they did two Blue River Bridges for two point eight million dollars for the Department of Transportation. Highway fifty did four bridges for the Department of Transportation, similar work for one point three million. Up on, that'd be Highway eighty-eight, they did about a million dollars worth of work doing the same type of stuff all this season. They're very familiar with this type of work, that's kind of, they're a bridge repair, they're not really bridge builders, they're more in this repair mode and gargrel type of repair company.
Okay.
Been doing it for many, many years.
You feel confident with them?
Yes, I feel very confident with them.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion for...
I have some questions, too. Did you have, did you prepare anything, what's your engineering costs included on those projects?
Based on, they said they'd take about thirty to forty-five days to complete instead of the whole ninety. I think we'd work with Steve to control our costs as much as possible, being that forty to forty-five thousand dollar range.
Okay, so we're looking at about, what, a hundred and nine, two, right at two hundred thousand?
Correct.
Short of two hundred. Okay, that was my question.
I'll be able to pay for this out of the buyback fund we have.
Okay. Alright, again, I would entertain a motion for either approval or denial, that we could discuss it some more.
I'll make a motion to accept the bid and the engineers' cost.
We have a, a motion for one forty-six, eight thirty-nine fifty, is that correct? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Record your, record your vote.
Been here way too long now.
You think?
Ken and Russ, please.
I, I hit it a couple times.
Alright.
Work sometimes.
Okay. Thanks, guys. Very good. Thank you.
And that's on the east half.
And that, the way the light's shining, I don't know whether I got it or not.
The other one, Steve, is December, didn't we talk about December on the west side?
Let's get electric ones. Okay. Moving on to general agenda items. Discuss, consider dismissing the Voca grant loan twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, Lisa?
I'm just, I'm just gonna give you an update. Elaine Menzel was contacted by John Cannon when he was here, what, four weeks ago? And she's given me some, another contact person to get ahold of at the Crime Commission, so, but, and I will tell you that I just got, I just shot off an email, I'll have more information for you in two weeks, I'm sure. But, details would be, we spent forty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars during the tenure of the Voca grant, which was about eleven months. And we, we have, to date, received sixteen thousand, two ninety-eight. So I wanna find out exactly which, which months they paid for, and some of the reasons why, I, I'm not finding denials or anything in the booklet that was passed back down to me from the people that were working with the Voca grant. So, anyway, right now, see if we can get more of the twenty-nine thousand dollars that were shorted, that we say we are, we expected to receive, so, again, I'll have more information for you, and I anticipate two weeks, three weeks.
You want us not to take action on this now?
No action yet.
No action, so...
We'll table it.
August five?
Sure.
Okay, I have a motion to table this item till August fifth meeting?
I'll motion to table.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Record your votes.
August, August fifth, please?
Clear?
Okay.
Alright, next item discussed. And consider approval of the special, special designated license for Niobrara Valley Vineyards LLC.
You have two S D Ls, both of these are for the, and there might be three. Niobrara Valley Vineyards and has two of them, and Flyover has one, this is all for the balloon event, yes?
Just a slight change on Flyover, instead of a six P M. stir, I have a new one for a five P M. stir, so you can...
That's fine. Yeah, we've, we've looked into, we've had Flyover, Niobrara Valley Vineyards is a new one. We've investigated their background, there's nothing adverse about them that we can find, and nothing adverse about Flyover, so we have no objection to this.
So you're okay with everything?
The reason is they're having more, more events at the Rural Mitchell location. They're having an evening event out there, so...
Okay. Have a motion for either approval or denial?
I approve that we approve the special designation for Niobrara Valley Vineyards.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Record your votes.
Okay.
Okay. Next item is update from the Zell Human Resources.
Okay, hang on, we, right, action on Flyover, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd move we approve the application for Flyover Brewing Company.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Record your votes. Okay.
Okay. You're on, John.
Next item's update from Zell Human Resources regarding past recruitment contracts. Can you hear us? We can't hear you. Try it again, please.
Gentlemen, can you hear us? Alright, gentlemen, can you hear us? Yes, yes, we can. Okay.
Okay.
Can you, can you try it again, we can't hear you very well.
How was that?
Could you get it up higher, John?
We're gonna turn it up a little bit on our end.
Okay, crank it up good high, so everybody can hear. Try, try it again?
Okay, how was that?
There you go.
Turn it up some more.
Yeah, you can go up some more.
You can leave, yeah, take, take it up. There you go.
Can you guys, can you hear me?
Uh, much better, thank you.
We can hear you, just, how are we sounding?
Just fine, just fine.
Okay.
Okay, we'll let you get started.
Okay, well, thank you Commissioners for having us, I know you're all busy to end the day, and it's almost a hundred degrees here in Lincoln. I know the temperature's in Scotts Bluff, but nice to be in the school area right now. Yeah, we really appreciate being on the agenda. Lisa did call Jake and I last week, and I think we're all largely on the same page, but we wanted an opportunity to respond to discussions, filling the deputy county attorney position for Scotts Bluff County. Just for some reference points, we've been actively searching on the deputy director role since our agreement has been signed. We did seal one deputy director defender position for Scotts Bluff County with Steve Lyman, and had another offer extended to another candidate, Russell Mulman, but was turned down because of pay. Submitted six qualified candidates for consideration, and it was our understanding that two were in contention to receive offers, one candidate, early twenty-four, had decided to take another opportunity, and we're currently awaiting results for the bar exam for another candidate. So she made, if she passes the bar, accept our offer for Scotts Bluff County. And Jake and this team have proactively reached out to over two hundred candidates to create interest and continue to do so. And through conversations, just from your Commissioners' perspective for us, through our conversations with potential candidates, important for, I think you all to know what we're hearing, and there's a couple obstacles, and again, I'm from Rushville, Nebraska, so filling that area is really easy for, for me and our team. But the feedback we get from candidates is largely either ones that we found to spend some time or drove driven to the area. But the biggest challenge we have is it's hard to get people, for whatever reason, to want to go live in Scotts Bluff area. If they are open to relocation, compensation tends to be the second or first obstacle we face. We never lead our conversations or interviews by talking about compensation, but when it does come up, most candidates want more than seventy-five dollars, unfortunately. And I would say those two obstacles combined, that position, a bit of a challenge, and when we have candidates that are open to, to, to both, the location and pay, we submit them for consideration immediately, and we feel the process can be expedited, once candidates are submitted, it would help us immensely. We do understand at all levels that the county are busy, and Lisa has to pass one information to the hiring manager, who's county attorney. And the county attorney, a case that they've worked on in court, that can cause delays. But speed of delivery is so important to the candidates and to us, and to the successful search process. And there were some instances where a significant amount of time was taken to get feedback on candidates, and at that point, they were either not interested, or more had accepted other opportunities. However, the Commissioners also know that we've done compensation analysis for this role. We have done a recorded video session with U N O College of Law. And as I referenced, along with posting this position to all of our job boards, we have proactively reached out to over two hundred prospects. We really enjoy recruiting for these positions, and we feel like we proved ourselves in filling a role with someone that relocated. And we hope that the candidate waiting should she pass the bar, accept our offer. And lastly, in addition, regarding the public defender, I believe you have one candidate. And I can almost guarantee that we can bring additional candidates to consider. With a salary of approximately a hundred and five thousand, it would make the opportunity more attractive to candidates. And I, I would imagine it has to be difficult and incredibly frustrating to have only one candidate. In any search, most people would prefer multiple candidates to choose. However, if your one candidate is exceptional, then there may not be any for others. But in our experience, even if this one candidate is stellar, most would prefer additional candidates to compare against. I just wanted to share that brief information, and again, for any Commissioners, again, thanks for your time. And if you have any questions for Jake, we'd be happy to answer that, too.
This is Mark Harris. Is there a salary range that you guys have put together? Obviously, we've had some studies done for those positions. That study is probably eighteen months old now or so, but I don't know whether there's salary range studies that you guys have done that would be helpful to us.
Great question, Mark, and we could run some new data points to that, too, and we are recruiting for some other counties as well, too, if we compare the data from that, too, but I think, you know, it's tough, I think, when we're trying to find, generally speaking, people, I don't know, they've been out of hospital, say, for five or six years, and if, if they're, you know, she's private practice, we don't have, we don't have much of a chance with them, we need to find, but, you know, I, we're seeing over eighty for most candidates, what they're getting offered, even right out of college. And I think the market's just tight, there's not enough attorneys out there, so I think that's just a tough market. But we could definitely run some data, we do pay for compensation analysis tools, so we could run some data points, so we could run a new survey this week if you wanted us to.
Kelly?
Go.
I, I would like to remind you guys that these salaries are set by resolution every four years.
For the...
Public defender.
For the elected official.
For the elected official and the deputy.
Correct.
Would these all be considered deputies?
The hundred and five would come in at more than the public defender's position this year.
Right, and we're not, at this point...
Not much more.
And even next year, yes? Ninety-nine, six thirty-six for this year, for twenty twenty-four.
Okay, and then we, was the next year, I thought it was a combination.
One oh four, six one six for twenty twenty-five.
So between the two, six months of one year, year of six months of the other. So it might be a hundred and two, a hundred and three?
Yeah, but not a hundred and five.
Okay, yeah, you're fine.
So, I think Lisa could communicate to you where we're at on the top end with the elected official, and then the, the next one underneath him being the, what we would consider the deputy. And she can communicate that to you, and we're locked into that. And she can go over that with you, and then we can, hopefully...
But, Mr. Harris?
Know where we're at.
The deputies that they're referring to, that they're helping us hire for right now, are not the eighty, ninety-six percent of the salary. This is on the pay scale.
Right.
And, yeah, they, they know what our pay scale is. And yeah, they, they know what our pay scale is.
Okay.
And, yeah, we might need, if they have additional data, maybe we do need to up it because it has been two years since our, our wage survey was conducted and I'm hearing like Hall County's will hire somebody like for ninety-seven thousand dollars. And I don't know if that's right out of college, first year law student, or lo, first year person and that's substantially more for, than us and not a comparable county anyway, but still, I mean, if a person can go from Lincoln and go to Grand Island for ninety-five thousand, why are they gonna travel here for seventy-five unless there's a tie to, to the community? So.
So, I, I think, just so you know where we're at with our elected official and our second, which is, we call the deputy, we're locked into those, but then after that, we can figure out where we're at.
Which is our chief deputy. And we only have a chief deputy county attorney and we already have one.
Right, that's what I'll call the chief deputy. Right.
Okay.
So, so we're really not looking for that, but that gives them a guideline as to where the top is.
Okay.
Right, and then, so anything has to be below that under the current process.
Basically. They're still on the salary scale. So, so it's either our public defender that's set by resolution.
Right. Well, you can work it out with them as, as we all know, the,
We're all good. I work with these guys.
We're coming up to budget time, so it might, it's gonna be important to know.
Correct.
And your, your fee is based on whatever their salary is, is that correct? Or whatever salary we?
Twenty percent of their first year salary, if they bring us a person. Twenty percent, correct, gentlemen? Isn't, there's a retainer.
Yes.
And which we've already paid a retainer for the deputy county attorneys that they're seeking for us. And then, once they find us somebody, which Dave has interviewed a young lady that we hope passes the bar and we'll hope, and we, we hope that she will come here and then we would owe twenty percent of her first year's salary.
So we pay a retainer?
Less five thousand.
Plus twenty percent of the first year's salary. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, so, so the retainer is taken out of the N P, so it's no, excuse me. So, it's a five thousand dollar retainer fee and that's taken out of the twenty per, that's taken out of the twenty percent. So there's no extra, that's no extra cost at all.
So we're not?
Protects us for example, um, let's say if we get an opportunity to recruit a public defender for you and it takes us four months and then you end up hiring uh, someone else, it protects us from the, let's say, hundred fifty hours it works and we can recruit some of that cost. But when that percentage of fee is done, it's all, it's all included in that five thousand. It's not an extra fee if that makes sense.
Yep, it does. I, the, when I first heard, I thought we paid you five thousand and then a, another twenty percent of whatever that salary is. But that five thousand is included at the end. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, anybody else have any more questions?
Yeah, I've got a few. Uh, Chad, regarding the delays that Zell has identified in the hiring process, can you go into more detail about those or, or the length of those delays or, or where those delays are occurring? And I just wanna be careful here that, that we're, I just wanna be careful here that we're, we're keeping in mind, we're in a, we're in an open session here, so if we need to go to an executive session to talk about these, we can certainly do that, uh, just to protect the county or any candidate names that you have. All that you s, go ahead.
Well, I think, and Lisa could probably contribute to this too, and Jake, I think what it amounts to, I think a lot of times that when, and Lisa helped me out here, Jake, when the candidate's presented to Lisa, then I think Lisa then has to present it uh, right away to the county attorney and just be sure because people are busy, there's just legs in response time sometimes. And that response time can be weeks. And therefore, that's a challenge to uh, the candidate, to Scotts Bluff County and to us. And I don't think anybody's certainly trying to do that regularly, like everybody's just busy. But in this recruiting environment that we're in, uh, speed of delivery is just so important right now. We have a really good candidate. Sometimes the first to act is gonna win. Uh, it's just like a person being recruited to, let's say, Nebraska to play football. You know, the first to offer, uh, the first school to offer, so you know, the first to offer sometimes that young man is gonna go to Nebraska because they remember that they wanted them more. And so it just helps us um, with moving candidates forward. And there's just been some delays. It's been challenging, but it's not uncommon, but it certainly slowed the process down.
You're, you're, uh, you have, you have multiple other clients, obviously. You're, you're recruit, recruiting for other counties as well as private business, nonprofits, those sort of things. What are, what are your best clients', uh, lead times on, on making offers or moving, moving these things forward? I mean, Scotts Bluff County, we wanna, we wanna be a premier um, place to work, you know, and so how can, if you had suggestions for us, what would, what would a timeline look like?
I think that the biggest thing is, and we get, let's say we get the opportunity to recruit a public defender for you, if we, we start our marketing campaign, post to our job board, start the proactive recruiting process, that takes up at least three, four, four, we're gonna present somebody so we can have enough interviews with the public defender candidate. And once we have somebody that we think is a quality candidate, then we'll submit it to Lisa. And an idea of what will produce and for her too, would be literally hearing back within the next day or two saying at least, yes, we would like to meet with a candidate or no, and then if, yes, we'd like to meet with a candidate, um, let's set it up on this day. So usually it's within uh, days typically with the candidates that we work with that really wanna get a position filled.
And what has been your experience uh, previously with, with Scotts Bluff County? Has it been days? Has it been weeks?
Oh, Lisa, what would you say?
Days at times, yeah, it's sometimes difficult to get it moved, proceeded, furthered. I don't know the word, word I want. It's, it's beyond my office.
I know, I know, I know.
Where the hiccup is.
Okay, I was thinking, it's, it gives, Jake gives a better perspective on the timeline. I mean, I, that's kind of communicative on, uh, weekly, weekly as to where things are. I've called, I, I mean, I would say it's usually roughly from what I could say, and I know I'm just checking in with Lisa, I know she's trying to work through and get uh, responses on things, but we've had some where we've gotten interviews lined up within a week or two timeframe and some that's um, just waiting for responses on things a, a month, maybe up to a little, over a month on getting a response. I would just have a conversation.
I think that answers all my questions. I, I think maybe, maybe the next elected officials and appointed meeting, we have a, we have a discussion about the importance of moving these things forward, 'cause I, you know, I know it's, we're going through multiple offices here between Lisa's office and then the appointed's office or the elected's office, so we just need to make sure that everyone is on the same page that, that, you know, speed is, is important, is a priority. Um, you know, because in this, like you, like they said, in this environment, um, where, you know, the world is flat, right? When we have this technology, it's, we can, we can meet and we can interview and within hours of a, um, of sending an email. So what's, I think we just need to keep that in mind.
So how many other offices are we recruiting for besides the attorney's office?
Well, we're recruiting for two different attorney's office, or we have in the past.
We have in the past. And we do have now a deputy public defender opening. Did have a resignation.
And we have used, we did, we did hire Zell, we hired you guys to help with the road superintendent position, I believe.
No.
No?
I don't think so.
We did not.
Okay.
So right, so right now, we're just working with public defender and a county attorney's office, is that correct?
And they would say technically just county attorney, 'cause we haven't had an opening in public defender in a while, so. Or we just call it attorney.
Just attorneys.
If we just want an attorney.
Attorneys, right. Okay.
I have a question. How long can we expect somebody to work here before we would owe your twenty percent? I mean, are we looking at, do they have a, you got a six month window that they've gotta be here, a year or two weeks?
We, we give a, a one-year guarantee on the candidate longevity, which is incredibly long, um, compared to other firms. And then, uh, we get paid, um, uh, on day one though, is when the bill goes out. And if that person does not make the one-year uh, timeframe, then we have to sort of start all over for the position.
Say that again.
Like that for all of our candidates to come. Yeah, so, um, we bill on day one.
Okay.
Candidate when they're a seat, but we have a, a one-year placement guarantee. So if that candidate leaves or an act of God happens to the candidate, then we replace the candidate, no comment.
Okay. You have other questions? Okay, if not, thank you very much for your time, we appreciate it. Anybody else? Lisa, you have anything else?
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, thank you, gentlemen, thank you all, appreciate it.
Okay, shut her down, John.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. Okay, next item is discuss, consider designated vendor for the printing, uh, postcards for the joint public hearing. Kelly?
I have an email.
You might wanna use your mic so they can hear in the back, dear.
John, where is the remote?
He's got it in his hand.
He's got it. Can we put it back to us for? Just, uh, N A C O is recommending, N A C O's recommending, I can't read my email from there. C S G is, uh, basically in bulk printing again like we did last time. Just, they're, that's who they are recommending and we do have to have you guys select the printer for the, um, joint public hearing postcards.
So who do we have to choose from besides this one?
Find our, find our own.
Okay.
Um, we use the state print shop, which I believe is something different.
And they did their research to find out that this would be the most economical way of doing it, I'm, I'm assuming.
I believe, yes, yes. Knowing N A C O, yes.
Right.
And that joint hearing, that's the pink postcard that we talk about?
The pink post, yeah, the pink postcard.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion then for the C S G, is that correct? For printing?
I move that we choose C S G for printing of our pink postcard.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Record your votes, please.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, um, receive the mission statement from Scotts Bluff Hearing Sports Council. Brenda?
Think you missed one there.
Where?
Right above it.
Oh, I did. I put the check on it too quick. Sorry. Discuss and consider publishing public notice to fill vacancy on Scotts Bluff County Tourism Committee created by retirement of Scotts Bluff National Monument Superintendent.
I just have some questions for Brenda on that. Brenda, is there anyone else can apply for that?
Talk to your mic, please.
Russ, yeah. Is there anyone else can apply for that position besides the Scotts Bluff County or the monument attendant?
Can we, we can't, we can't appoint anyone else but that person?
Not according to our bylaws, that we have saved one position, um, on the tourism board to, um, for, for someone from the Scotts Bluff National Monument, the superintendent. And one is coming here soon. I wouldn't think we would need to, um, take any action on this right now. Someone's coming and, and we would get them appointed and on board as soon as they get here. Um, I have a letter I would like to share with you.
All right.
It's from, um, Mr. Dan for Morford. He is, um, a retired superintendent for the Scotts Bluff National Monument.
Are you, are you going to read it, Brenda?
I certainly can.
Thank you.
Maybe, if I don't, okay. As a retired N P S superintendent, I have been involved with a number of park leaders and their communities as they work together on a variety of projects. The N P S encourages superintendents and park leadership to be a part of their communities as appropriate. Scotts Bluff National Monument is an intricate part of the community. It draws visitors from around the world and exposes those visitors to the great community and county that you all live and work in currently. In addition, having the representative on the county tourism board only adds to open communication between the two parties and gives the board an added perspective as topics are discussed. A varied knowledge base assists the tourism board to have discussions from many different points of view. These discussions and ultimate decisions then set the foundation for all parties to be heard at the table. I would encourage the involvement of park leaders on the Scotts Bluff County Tourism Board. Respectfully, Dan Morford.
Does he live in Scotts Bluff County?
He did, yes, he just,
He doesn't live here anymore?
No, he's retired.
So, okay, so that's not gonna help us. Um, in the interim, is there any way we can appoint someone just in the interim, just as an interim?
We're talking, they, they are supposed to have somebody here by August. And we talked about this. This is something that we discussed in our tourism board about asking somebody else. Um, the problem is, is that it's the process that they have to go through to be able to serve on this board. So we could have had somebody as a sounding board, but nobody that could have helped, um, in voting. So we're better off just to wait for this person to arrive and then, um, the direction from Dan was passed on to, um, the government. And then, when they send the person here, they know that they will be serving on the tourism committee.
They'll be pointed immediately then?
Yes, they know immediately. I think a couple of years ago or a couple, um, superintendents ago, we had a guy start that day and come to his first meeting that afternoon. So they, they already have their timeline and know exactly what they're doing before they ever get here and exactly, um, the places that need filled and where their representation is needed.
But that's according to your bylaws, right?
Yes, our bylaws says that, that's the only standing position that we have on the bylaws is that we reserve one position for the superintendent. And it's just really because what Dan explained here, it's a very, um, intricate part of the community. And, um, we feel that the superintendent, um, talks to so many people. Um, like he said, there's people from all over the world that he talks to and he gets a large knowledge base from these guests. He learns a lot from them, why they came to Nebraska, um, and just talks to thousands of people that give great input that we can use in our tourism meetings.
Can you keep the board kind of informed on the ETA on the new superintendent?
Yes, and I, I talked to Dan probably a month ago just to see, you know, where the process is and I'm sure it's like everything else, you know, they probably got some different hangups on, um, you know, different things with budgets and whatever. But I know that they will get somebody here as soon as possible and we heard, um, August, unless Carla has another update on that. So, right around the corner.
Okay, but if he's retired, how does he get into the loop?
Um, because he had to prepare the paperwork for the next person. So when he retired, he prepared all of the paperwork that would be handed down to the person that they appoint to.
But do you have a, actual contact with, uh, N P S to talk to someone that?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, we talked to him quite a bit.
All right.
So, yeah, but that, that process is about to happen. I think we just need to wait a little while longer until we hear something.
That was my question. Anybody else got anything on that?
Well, if the position, if the policy says it's that person going into that position, what else would we be doing?
Yeah, no, I, I don't know. I did not put this on here, this agenda, so I'm not even certain where it came from.
I did, I put it on here.
Yeah, no, so, yeah, I think it was just, uh,
Not sure I did. Okay.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so if, if that's what the policy says.
Yes.
And that's what we're locked into, then.
My main question is just who can apply, 'cause we have a void there and I just kinda wanted to know who could apply. I'd like to hear it from Brenda.
Yes.
If it could be anybody else.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I, just to follow up on Russ's question, could somebody else from the monument be a part of that? Does it have to be the superintendent?
You know, there's some pretty,
It, it, it is, it does have to be the superintendent. Like I said, anybody else could come in to the meetings and listen and perhaps, um, give their point of view, but they would not have the authority to vote and not And not because of us, but because that's not who was appointed.
Because your bylaws-
But don't they have a temporary superintendent out there? Don't they have a temporary soup?
Yes.
Well, couldn't that person at least be invited to the meetings?
We did, I asked them, I asked them already and they're not comfortable making decisions. They would just strictly be there for con, the conversation part of it.
So your bylaws specifically say superintendent. Is that correct? Okay.
Okay, all right.
All right.
I just had a couple of questions. So, um, I called, I called the National Monument and asked when they expected to have a superintendent in place. And they told me that the job wouldn't be posted until September or October. So is that, is that different now? Because I don't even see a job posting on their website for that position. So do they, have they already made the, have they already hired the person, we're just waiting for him to get here? Or has the job not even been posted? Because I was told the job wouldn't be posted until September or October. So it'll probably put us out another three or four months after the job is posted.
But, so then what, we would have to change the bylaw then? That's, I, I don't-
I'm just, yeah, I mean, I'm not-
Regardless of what their timeline is, I mean, when Dan quit, I would imagine that was their timeline. But like I said, any of that stuff can change. I, I don't know.
Let, let me ask you, Brenda, what is the necessity? Although it's in your bylaws that there is a position for the superintendent? If that's, if it's filled in one month or five months, is there, is, does it matter, I guess?
No.
You still have a full committee, you're not short of quorum or, or anything like that?
No. Nope, we can still function.
Okay.
So, I guess I'll ask again, I just need a short answer. We, do we know when the superintendent will be here?
We were told August. That's all I can tell you. That's what was relayed to me in the paperwork that Dan used when he exited.
Okay, so I guess we're getting different information because I was told the job wouldn't be posted until September or October. And it's not posted on the website. So I'm, so we're still in limbo here. And then I wanted to add a couple of other things, so, um, and this, this kinda moves, this would move things forward a little bit, um, but I'll just tell you guys, I, I drove down to Carney this weekend and I met with Paul Eunice, uh, for about two hours on Saturday morning. Uh, talked about a lot of things, tourism related, tourism, um, visitor bureaus, just, just wanted some feedback from him. And he was adamant that, um, and for those of you that don't know, Paul Eunice is the guy that owns all of the hotels at that interstate interchange there on the south end of Carney. He's got multiple event centers, he's got hotels in, um, Fremont, Norfolk, Hastings, Grand Island. And, you know, we, we sat down for like two hours and he was adamant that attractions and events should not have voting positions on the tourism committee. His thought process there was, you need to have the, that committee filled with, um, business owners from the community who see things through the lens of return on investment. And, um, those were some feelings that I had. He, he put it kind of into, into more eloquently than I had in the past. What he's, he had, he had a lot of different reasonings for that, but he said, when you have this, when you have attractions and events represented on that committee, then you tend to get a, um, you get into a situation where, you know, there, those groups are coming to ask for the tourism money rather than looking outside of, um, those groups. So, when you have business people in those positions, those people own businesses that are trying to make a profit. And, um, so they see through that lens of return on investment. And they're not, then they don't qualify for the tourism funds themselves. Because they run for-profit businesses and the statutes say we can only give money to, we can only grant money to organizations that are nonprofit, um, own, you know, facilities that are owned by the public. Um, and so that, that was the reasoning for moving in this direction because I believe, um, we need to move the tourism committee, um, away from having membership that is represented by attractions and, and events. Um, and I know that's in our bylaws, um, but I, I would like to see the bylaws changed for those reasons. So, so that's where I'm coming from, that's, that's kind of the reasoning, um, of why I would like to see this happen. You know, we, he also suggested, um, you know, like, like your hotel positions should be filled by people with ownership interest in the hotels and not just hotel employees. He was very adamant about that. And then he, um, you know, you know, just to be honest with you, I went down there, um, looking for something else, looking for him to support an idea that I presented him, which he did not. Um, and a lot of you guys know I, I'm in favor of, um, changing how we can, uh, spend capital improvement money and promotion money. And he was not in, he didn't, he did not think that was a great idea. So, I just want to be completely transparent that I, that, um, you know, he did not support me in that, but he brought up these comments. And I really, I strongly believe that's the direction that the tourism committee should move, um, to have the membership on that tourism committee represented by the business community, um, and not attractions and events.
Is, is he part of a, of the tourism group down there?
He is the, he has been the chair or the vice chair of the Carney Area Visitor Bureau for like twenty or thirty years.
So, myself, um, I don't own a hotel, I don't own, but we are business. Um, that's settled, so I'm not saying I'm-
Come, come here. We just, we just need to get you on tape, that's all.
We are, that's settled, we're sitting there by what was set way before us, that we're here. And so I guess I just feel we are business people. We might not own hotels or we might not, but we are volunteers that go and find a lot of events to bring to the community. As a business owner, I might not always do that. I might not always look to find a large event to bring and round up the volunteers to make sure that is hosted and people come. I care about it as a business owner, but I might not be the one that really encourages that activity to happen or that event. But I do feel as members that I have watched go through, they are business people. And, um, we care about what comes to the community and what activities happen, what events. Um, I get the ROI, I get that, but we, we care about that too because there's statutes on how this money is to be distributed and spent. And even though we all may not have an interest in some things, we think the community will. And so, um, I guess in, in a roundabout way, or me just being a layman, I, I do think there are business people that are on the committee. Maybe they don't own hotels or restaurants, but they care about who comes to those hotels and who comes to those restaurants. We still care about that and that's what we want for those businesses. We want them to do well because it makes our community do well. And so I guess that's just where I kinda stand on it, um, where, uh, we don't always agree, but we do agree that we follow the state statutes on how that money is spent. And we do follow the state statutes on how that money is distributed and that we want to see these events in the community. Because like I said, not everyone just comes here to stay in a hotel. There's a reason they're coming here to stay in a hotel. Or there's a reason they're coming to eat at a restaurant or do an activity. And so I think it's all just a little circle. And, um, I guess I just look at us as we're part of the community, we're part of what goes on here and what we, you know, we care about. And we're on the board, on the advisory board due to the bylaws. And now it's kinda like it's not good enough. And so I guess that's just where I stand, but, um, we do care, we do care what happens to our business owners. We are business owners, it might be in a different field, uh, but we are, so. I don't know. Any questions for me?
So, just, just so everyone knows, you rep, you're on the board because?
I represent, uh, lodging.
Okay, and your lodging is the-
Through the Scottsbluff County Fairgrounds.
The Fairgrounds has campsites. And you were previously on the board to represent?
Lodging.
You've al, it's always been lodging? It's never been?
I, I, I could be on it for events.
Events.
I could probably fall under that category, but I've currently been on it for lodging.
So my, 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 uh, thought process would be to let, let the terms continue. And then as the, you know, as, as one term ends, we would then change that position, you know, like, if your term was to end, then, um, then we would make that position a, well, you're lodging, so that would stay lodging. Okay, but let's say if someone who represents an attraction, um, when their term ended, then we would make that, then we would change that position's title.
I'm not, uh, I don't wanna speak out of turn, but I do think the state has category, and so many that can be on, maybe, I mean, Brenda, you, well, I, I could all be lodging? In your advisory board, all be lodging for all restaurants? And that's a state statute, that's not bylaws or correct.
Right, so, so the state statute simply says, we have a seven-member board, so we can have up to two people from lodging, I'm sorry, at least two people, people from lodging and up to three, up to three people from lodging.
No more than three.
No more than three, correct.
And then if it's a five-person board, you have to have two.
But the, but the other positions are not defined in the state statute.
So, that's all I'm saying is, is there are, there are those guidelines as well that, I mean, you have to consider and, and follow, so. But it can't all be just, for what I, yeah, just be lodging and it can't just be restaurant owners or, you know, a business owner of some sort.
So in, in theory, with a seven-person board, we could have three people from lodging and four people from restaurants.
A, and you'd have to be a seven-member board, which currently you are not, right?
Yeah, we are.
We are a seven with, with Dan, with that, those positions? Okay, okay. So, that is just where I kinda feel, um, I think we have a great community. I think the advisory board works hard. I think they care of what happens to the community. Um, and, you know, I, I guess I didn't really feel there was an avenue that we were pursuing and, and doing the best we can do, because like I said, we don't always agree.
There's a third category, and that's those that are really interested in tourism and wanna be part of it.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
And, and, and we've seen a lot come and go with that.
You know, we've, we've left out, we had some natural things that brought a lot of people to our community, um, with the eclipse and, uh, you know, this gravel. Is it in September?
Yes.
Um, you know, that kinda, I mean, there's not a lot of areas that can shut down roads like we can. Can't do that in the metropolitan area, can't do that in Colorado, it might be beautiful, but they're not gonna shut down roads.
It's been successful.
And so, um, you, you know, I just think those are some great things. And I think we as a group, and I'm not gonna speak for everybody, but I feel we, we really take that into consideration. And we really do care, so, or we wouldn't be there.
Otherwise you wouldn't spend your free time to go to a meeting.
Yes, and I have another one at six.
There you go.
Yeah, yeah.
Which board, what board do you sit on that meets in the evenings?
Um, this is a four-H council and it doesn't meet monthly, just, we are preparing for fair, so, yeah.
Thank you, Laura.
Uh-huh, thank you.
Kim, yeah, I think you had your hand up.
I'm Kim Johns. Um, I'm also part of the tourism committee. And, um, I appreciate your time just to listen and to kind of mull over the dynamics of our group and your group. I appreciate Charlie, your, your passion for tourism. I appreciate you going to view other cities. What I really would appreciate is if you could attend our meetings. So you are our liaison, you're the one that's supposed to be at our meetings, listening to the conversation, listening to people giving the grants and bringing that information back to this board. This is how I view it. Um, so correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm having a really hard time, I've been on the board for a lot of years. The liaison in our past that I was part of, um, she came to every meeting and we would reach out to her when we were having discussions, especially for the, the discussions that were ten thousand dollars or over. But she would share what she thought your board's, um, thought process might be. Mr. Knapper, I don't believe you've been to a meeting other than the one that I invited Ken to um, in maybe fourteen or fifteen months. It's very hard to try and get a grasp of what our committee is, is contemplating, what the people are approaching us on. And then to watch commissioner meetings where you're sharing input about things you haven't even been to our committee on. The biggest thing I wanna get across is that you are one vote. You, this is a whole committee just like ours. And there's times that I don't vote with our advisory committee. And when we walk out of that meeting, then I am with them because I was outvoted. But the job is to be a team and to be a cohesive unit. Right now, we do not have that. The liaison that we have, Charlie, um, there's animosity. I, I, I've heard from the community, things, disparaging things that you have said about our committee. And I take, um, I take offense to that. Because come to our meetings and have those discussions, but also when you come to share information, um, it needs to be your whole committee's vote. And to have something like this brought up about the, um, about the position from the monument, why could that not go to our committee first and let's discuss that? I've heard other things that you're wanting to implement. And those are the things, as a liaison, you come to the committee and you walk us through your thought process. But at the end of the day, when we, we walk out of there, we have the discussion. Yes, you can carry the conversation to your board, that's your job. One, you need to be there, but two, you carry it and you let your fellow commissioners make their own decisions. This is not about just your thought process. I guarantee you, there are gonna be people in this community that will take definite offense to your saying that their attractions don't matter.
Have I said that?
I felt like that's what you just said, that the attractions don't do anything for tourism, that events don't do, well, you're wanting to switch the whole board. But, long story short, I've shared my piece, but the, the, the biggest thing is you can't change anything until you walk through these bylaws and change them. So you're going down a rabbit hole right now trying to decide whether you can appoint somebody from the monument. Unless I'm wrong, I think you have to change the bylaws before you can just willy-nilly do whatever.
Can you go to the last page of the bylaws?
Of our bylaws?
Yeah.
What part?
Read bylaws about three times a week.
And I have, as well.
Can you read? Can you read that bylaw?
Yes. Article ten waiver provision, the Scottsbluff County Board of Commissioners reserves the authority to waive any provision of these bylaws upon showing good cause to do so. Very good. That means your entire board votes to do that. It means that just Charlie Knapper can't walk in and say, we're gonna do it. So, yeah, I agree with that. Have you given these guys the, the, um, I, I mean, yeah, you've been to Carney, you've been wherever, you haven't been at our meetings, but you have to go through the process, you have to go through approach. And it's about your committee, it's about the entire community, not just what- It's about the entire community, not just what Charlie Knapper thinks is important to tourism. Any questions? Thank you.
So that's exactly why this agenda item is here, um, so that, that this board can take a vote. Because that's what you asked for.
I beg your pardon?
Because that's what you asked for, you asked for this board to move. You, you want, you wanted, you want this board to make a decision and not make?
Our advisory board totally understands that we are an advisory board, but let me tell you, I'm done going into three and four-hour meetings once a month to give opinions, to talk about how things, you know, the best way to approach it. If you're gonna come in here and totally change what our decision was, what, why do we meet? What is our purpose?
Have we, have we changed anything that you guys have done? Have we denied anything?
I believe, I believe there, we don't even need to get into that, Charlie, i- it's, yes, you have, I think you could.
What have we denied?
Well, the city of, the city of Gearing, the Five Rocks.
I'll explain that one more time.
I don't even wanna, I, it, it, don't waste people's time.
I'll, I'll go ahead and explain when you're done.
You'll what?
I'll explain when you're done.
Okay. Um, but that's, that's what I posed to the board is, and that's why we invited Ken to our last board meeting. There, there is a definite disconnect, um, this process worked seamlessly before. And it worked in the way that the, the statutes design it to. But it's supposed to be a culmination of various tourism people, various professionals, and so you get different viewpoints, it's no different, my position on the board is an at-large position, I, I, I work at Heritage Estates. I'm nothing in tourism, but I'm Johnny Q Public, I'm just the normal person out there, um, so that, that's my role on the board. But the board is designed to have a group of professionals, all with different viewpoints, no different than your board. Your board, each one of you think differently, and it's, it's the process of coming together, majority vote, vote rules. But what I challenge you is, one of you, reach out, talk to an advisory board member. Don't just take instructions from one person, it is your due diligence to get out there and, and investigate before you vote, don't just, don't just hand up a vote for any old reason. Um, that is your charge here as commissioners, and that's our expectation. But if there is not, if, if our board is, um, I, I'm, I'm having a problem knowing the purpose of our board, if what, the hours that we invest, if they don't mean anything. And that means your role as liaison is to bring our discussions so your fellow commissioners can, can think through it and make their own decisions. It's what we need to hear more of, instead of I did this, I did that, it's we. We has to be part of it, that's all I need to say.
So we tabled a agenda item a few meetings ago that was a funding request from Five Rocks Amphitheater, the City of Gearing. Uh, we tabled, we tabled the item. Over the course of the next nine days, I visited the Gearing city offices, I spoke with Annie Folk. I went to Carla's office at the Civic Center, she was at State Golf. Um, I called three different city council people, I called the mayor, I called the, uh, city administrator, and I talked to the Scottsburg city manager who's also a Gearing resident. Um, and I worked through this process, I wanted to find out what is, um, you know, where do other people stand on, on this topic? Um, Ken Meyer, uh, made a really good point to me, because this board was asking for private input into that project, and Ken Meyer said, you know, most of the events that take place out there are, are where private entities, um, rent the facility to do their thing. So, that, um, that shows private input, I thought, okay, that, that makes a lot of sense. So, um, and then after talking with, with all of those City of Gearing people, I came around and I kept my board informed the entire time, every, almost every time after I had a conversation with somebody. I, I kept my board apprised of those conversations. And, um, nine days after we tabled the item, I told Brenda we would put it back on the agenda, I told the county clerk to please put it back on the agenda, and I told the other commissioners that I would, that I am now in support of the project. Um, it was about nine AM when I asked Kelly to put it on the agenda, at two thirty PM, the City of Gearing, um, withdrew their application, so we have not denied anything. Um, we moved through the political process, and I was prepared to approve the project. So if, 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 if anyone has a problem with that, I would um, challenge you to say, um, I would challenge you, because we have not denied anything as a board here from the tourism committee, never. Now, um, this board approved a forty-eight thousand dollar sculpture project in the Gearing Civic Plaza. Um, I question how many hotel rooms have been sold for that project? Um, I question how many meals were consumed for that project, but that's something that this board did. Um, we approved that, and, um, you know, we approved the Cattlemen's Ball request. We can, we can, s- I, I think that's, um, you know, we can, we can move as a board, um, and still field questions from the public on, why did you do that? Um, and, and that is what fuels this desire to move in a different direction. And no one ever said the, the attractions and the events that are currently represented on the tourism board. Nobody said those events or those attractions don't matter, no one said that. I did not say that, I said it's more appropriate to have business people on the tourism committee. That's what I said, that, and those business people will also probably agree, and if, if, if they're, if they're tourism committee, uh, substance, then, then, uh, they would also agree that those events and those attractions matter. No one up here said those things don't matter, we just, I just believe that it's more appropriate to have people who cannot ask for money on that board. When people who are privy to that money sit on the board, it, it gets us into a, a sticky situation. You know, um, I should not be, um, or, you know, if it, if, if we have five attractions represented on that board and, and they can all, right now, everyone on that board can come and ask that board for money, except for Kim. But everyone else on that board can come and ask for money, that's not appropriate. It would be more appropriate for people who can't ask for that money to be on that committee, that would be more appropriate. So that is why I believe the makeup of the committee should be made up of business people who are not allowed to ask for that money.
How many business people do you have that apply when you have an opening, have you denied it to anybody? Are there any, any business folks that are interested in being on it, that you know of?
Well, no, because when we run the ad, we don't ask for those people, I mean, you know, like Lana said, she considers herself a business person.
But they have the opportunity to apply.
No, they don't, because they, they are not, because the bylaws say only people from attractions or events or transportation can apply.
You can run an event and still be a business owner.
How many of those do we have?
I mean, the last people, well, Jeremiah Gardner is in, was a, um, a bi- is a business owner, and he ran and served under the events.
And how much money did we grant his events?
Um, I, it, I gave you that six-month sheet, Charlie, I don't carry all of the, I can't remember every single statistic that goes.
And didn't, didn't, didn't the committee approve?
There's more.
Didn't the committee approve to, uh, or didn't he, uh, turn in handwritten invoices to get reimbursed?
We, we don't know any of that, I'm not on the grant committee, no, I mean, sure, he turned in, but, but we don't know whether, I mean, who's to say that they weren't, it wasn't correct? I'm not, I mean, you're, you're great committee.
But, but that, that board member turned in handwritten invoices to, for reimbursement, did he not?
Yeah.
He did.
But nothing says he can't, he just needs, I'm not on the grant committee and I don't review the grants. I have no part in that process at all whatsoever, so you would have to ask the grant committee, um, what process they took to review.
And those, those are great questions to come in if you were at the meeting, you can share, you need to be at the meeting, and I know you have a conflict, but, so with that said, if, if it conflicts with you, then maybe we need a different liaison. Um, we all took the positions, um, because we knew the time that the board met, and that's, I mean, I wouldn't be able to come if it was a new meeting. But that, we could go on and on all night about it, but it's just, those are the kinda things, the discussions at the meeting between us and the board liaison, that's where, that's the importance of that.
Okay, I was at the meeting when he submitted the handwritten invoices, that's how I know, that's, that's, that's why I know about that.
Two years ago?
Yeah, but that wasn't.
You and I haven't been on our board for how long?
Year and a half? But that wasn't the last meeting I was at.
But I mean, you, the, Ken, to your point, I mean, y- yeah, just because they serve on the tourism committee doesn't mean that they, they can't, nobody says that they can't be a business owner, like an exa- you know, yeah, you can run an event or be a part of an event and still be a business owner, same way, I mean, um, what's our, this sports thing, he's a business owner.
Yeah, and I guess the reason for my question is that, did, as a business owner, do you have time to even be on a committee like that? That would be their choice.
Sure.
And, 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 do you know of any that have applied to be on it?
Well, I mean, Chuck Heeman's a good example, he's a business owner, and he's on our committee.
Okay.
Rick Keller was on it, he was a business owner, so, there was a lot of them, I just can't think of every single person to run through the um, committee, I mean, honestly, I've been with a small group, most of these people have been here for a very long time because maybe they took over, so they got to finish somebody else's term and then go ahead and do their own, so honestly, I've been with quite a few of these people for most of the time. We haven't had a lot of, a lot of turnover at all.
Would, Charlie, this is for you, would those business people not benefit from an event coming to the, to the county?
Of course they would benefit from the event coming to the county.
Okay.
Sorry, I forgot what I was doing.
Okay.
Okay.
The, when we, um, uh, need to fill a position, are those applications, um, the committee advertises for those positions, the committee, um, reviews those applications, and then generally, the way I remember it, you offer one person, uh, to the board, this board, um, as your recommendation to fill the position, would that be true?
Um, yes, that would be true, um, I would, mo- most of the time, we're lucky to get even one person, and it's just because, um, like Ken mentioned, they're early, they're ear- I mean, they're, they are busy running their event, they're busy doing other things, and it's hard to get people to, to join the tourism committee, honestly. Um, so most of the time, you know, we've only had one, like for instance with Aunt Lana's position, we only had one, you know, and so we brought her, it's hard to get the hotel people to commit.
You interview the applicants before you make the recommendation?
We all bring at least two questions to ask them, so, um, when it was seven, they were asked a series of fourteen different questions.
So all, the whole board, the whole committee interviews?
Committee interviews, and they are asked to submit, um, a letter of reference, just, why do you want to be on the tourism committee? Why is this important to you, you know, how does it fill a void in your career? And then, of course, their resume, and then we interview them. And then, yes, we come to you, just like the other boards, and we say, you know, we had a vacancy for, I think maybe one of the last ones we brought would have been like Chuck Heeman as an example. We brought that, um, to you and said that we need somebody to fill the sports segment, and he was the applicant. This is what we were impressed with. And then you voted on it.
And we approved it from your recommendation?
Approved it from our recommendation.
So one of the things that we could certainly do from our position here is our own personal recruiting of anyone to possibly sit on the board, and encourage them to apply through your application process.
Absolutely, yeah, we turned it into, you know, all the newspapers and, you know, all of that, even though, you know, I, I don't know that that was always the best process, so Kim, last time, asked me to really extend our reach, and so I sent um, out an email to every person that has, um, turned in a grant application, who has been any part of any tourism committees, who has been part of event planning. I sent out hundreds of emails to try to reach out to everybody to let them know that that is the position that we were seeking. So, we also, um, did some social media, so we really expanded our reach last time to try to, to get people that were appropriate and that were interested in the position, and that's the main thing. It's, it's finding someone that is interested in serving that void on the committee.
Is anybody else wishing to speak? Want to come up here?
But the person that runs the monument or the curator, they don't have to have any qualifications.
Little peer.
Just something to note, that's in the bylaws, I get that, that probably needs changed, because how do we know that person knows anything about this valley, the people in this valley, what we like, what we don't like, what makes this community tick? The heartbeat of this community, that person knows nothing about this valley, they're coming to run the monument. They, they applied for a position with federal government to be part, whatever, that, and they're darn good at that. I'm just, I guess my question is, how do they get an automatic, and it's not your fault or your fault or yours, it's how the, it's how it was set up. I don't, I don't think that was quite correct, maybe that's something we need looking into, that was somewhat, how many years ago? When were the bylaws for this committee created? It's quite possible, maybe they need to look at, so, anyway, that's. Um, Matt's over there, so, I mean, I, I, I guess what I'm saying is, there's a, it seems like there's a lot of, a lot of hot, cold in here, but we should bring it all together, and if, if there's a person or persons, and, and you also have to understand, uh, if you have a business professional and they're in charge of a committee, and they ask to move the time, and then the committee doesn't agree, and you guys are at a little impasse there, we'll work it out, find a way, you know, get in the trenches, work it out, work it out. It's a great community, we run a lot of stuff, I, I volunteer a shitload of my time, so, so do they. So do you guys, work it out, right? So do they, so do you guys. Work it out, right?
Okay, anybody else? Well, the agenda item says discuss and consider publishing public notice. You guys have done that already, is that correct? But you're not.
Well.
What what we're gonna do is bypass what you're doing and publish a notice for ourselves on a position, right?
No.
Well, I'm I'm just talking about what's on the agenda here.
No. We are, we will wait to uh till the superintendent for the Scottsburg National Monument gets here. And if he, she agrees that they want to serve on the committee, then they have first rights to that position.
According to this set of bylaws we have.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, I think I'll retract my motion to uh or at, you know, my resolution.
I can't hear you.
At this point.
Your motion for?
Well, the resolution to uh put out a a notice.
Oh, I didn't know he had a motion on.
Well, I had a, don't have a right to ask for an uh a resi- you know.
Well, you 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 lost me now, Russ. I'm sorry.
No, I have, I moved my paper too far away from.
It's his agenda item, so he's withdrawing his agenda item.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I want to do.
That's fine. We'll just take no action on it, basically.
Same way if we withdraw.
That's fine.
Okay.
All right. With that, we'll move forward to move on to the next item. Received mission statement from the Scottsburg Gearing Sports Council. Brenda, you're still up.
Okay, Erin is, actually, these are two things we can kind of bring together. They didn't necessarily need to be items, I just sent.
There's a, there's a empty chair there, Erin. Grab that.
I just sent one as an attachment, so Erin, actually, you have the copy of that, correct?
Uh, yes.
Is that what you're talking about? Yes. It's so pretty, huh?
Two minutes.
Yeah, so I guess as we as we kind of get into this, I'll try to speak loud enough. Um, at the at the end of the last meeting, I think um the sports council was brought up and it was. How do I say this with as much grace and tact uh as I can? Um, maybe mischaracterized or misinterpreted what has gone on up until now. Uh, I think it was said that nothing has been done. That's not correct. Uh, as to put that as lightly as possible. Um, so we have a mission statement, there's a board in place. I would say the people on that council are kind of dynamic as we move forward. As we um, you know, a- as we come together with this board on what that vision is, right? Um, and and kind of align where we think we need to go and what direction and what resources and what uh infrastructure and things like that that we have. Um, but I'll I'll start out with the 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 mission statement and we can kind of go from there. So the mission statement of the Scottsburg Gearing Sports Council is, the Scottsburg Gearing Sports Council is a five oh one C three nonprofit with the aim of attracting sporting events of all types. Which positively impact the local economy, tourism efforts and community image, promote inclusion of athletes of all ages and abilities. And encourage expansion of both natural and manufactured sporting infrastructure. Um, and so I think that kind of covers all the bases, right? We're we're our our sort of long-term vision, vision is looking at um new events, new sporting events that we can bring to the community. One successful example, obviously, is gravel nationals coming up that we've already successfully bid for and hosted once, uh and now we're in year two. Um, you know, it sounds like maybe Charlie has some other ideas for other tournaments going forward, that kind of thing. Um, and so happy to to dive into those, um those possibilities, that kind of thing. And it and positively impacting all the things that we've been talking about, tourism, attractions, um economic benefit, uh youth sports. Um, creating a pathway for lifelong uh participation in in all sorts of physical activity, right? Um, and so that's kind of the ominous vague description of of what we see us doing going forward. And of course, securing funding through public and private uh enterprise, um partnering with corporate sponsors, that kind of thing, obviously, to kind of give this vision off the ground. Um, that all takes hours and time and and people and all that kind of stuff too, so. Um, that's kind of what's going on. I think Brenda can kind of run through some other tough stuff that everybody else has been doing.
I'm just. I'm kind of, I'm just gonna go through a timeline of where where we started and where we are now. Um, the the time in between each of these ven- events is is really not that long when you consider everything that we've accomplished. So in December of two thousand twenty one, our board had an annual retreat. And I reached out to somebody from Columbus, Nebraska, because they're similar in size as us, um as opposed to like the Omaha Sports Commission, who is not similar to us. So Columbus was the closest. I invited her to a Zoom meeting and she talked to us a little bit about Sports Nebraska and how that organization could help us. Kim Lang and I actually, and because it was fair week when this first happened and everybody was so busy, so Kim joined me, and this has been eight years ago. When Sports Nebraska started and we knew we could not play in that market at this time. We knew we had a lot of things that we needed to change and we weren't ready. But when we felt there was some interest in that perhaps we could start viewing sports again. Um, we got ahold of somebody and she talked to us in December of two thousand twenty one about Sports Nebraska. In April of two thousand twenty two, we became members of Sports Nebraska and started working with other organizations in our state. Try to find out how Sports Nebraska could help us, um learning about other sports facilities and start working with others in the state. One month later, the two visitors bureaus designed um our logo and announced our intention to create a sports council.
What, when was that date?
April two thousand twenty two. And we began attending Sports Nebraska meetings immediately. In October of two thousand twenty two, we announced our partnership with Huddle Up Group, signed our contract and started working on a strategic plan. Um, working with some of the best sports planners in the United States, and that was only five months. Now, what did we do in between um May and October? We had to find a reputable company to conduct our plan. We had to go through an interview process and filled out all of our onboarding paperwork to include articles of incorporation, our bylaws, that type of thing. We had to set a budget. We invited all of the sports players to the table and started planning. And we worked with Huddle Up until the plan was released. And the playbook was released on Memorial Day of two thousand twenty four, so only four months. And also, in that time, we bid, the USA first ever national gravel championship won the bid and we had four months to plan that entire event. Where thousands of people came to our community, four months to plan that event. Um, plus our normal summer workload. So I would say that in that timeframe, um as honestly an unincorporated group, I think we did pretty darn good. And then um we also, some of the other things that we have done out of the Huddle Up. Um, we did the, we have our sports mission. One of the biggest things we have to accomplish right now is our guide. But we need thousands of dollars of pictures. We cannot sell any of these venues, we cannot sell any of these sports without pictures. There again, this is where we hit the money wall. If you could just give me fifty million dollars, that would be great. We could build a sports complex, we could get our pictures, we could hire a director and everything would be splendid. It it's it's gonna take a lot of money to play in this market. We're doing what we can with what we have to work with right now. Um, we can, it was suggested by Huddle Up that we um. Consider running golf, cycling and youth baseball. We do all of those things. Um, yeah, I explained the photographs already. I skipped one. Um. We are in the process of pla- planning our second USA National Gravel Championship that will be held in Gearing September eighth. Um, one of the biggest opportunities that happened for us is the Scouts program. And if you're going to be a a meeting planner, I mean, a sports planner, you have to have access to these programs. You don't just jump on a website and find something to bid. You have to pay for all of that. It's all something that you pay for. You have to pay to be a member. You have to pay to use all of these different programs. And so that is something really big that happened for us. Actually, um the state, the Nebraska Tourism Commission put money in so that we could be part of. The Scouts program through um Sports Nebraska. And that allows us the ability to go in and find events that our community is suited to um bid.
So the money didn't come from us, it came from from the state?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay.
That is correct, yes, because it's expensive. I mean, it's it's thousands of dollars. There's no way we could buy that. And that's the only way we're gonna be able to get ahold of those ev- events is have is having access to these high dollar profiles that we can dig into to find what's best for us. Um, our long-term range um will continue. They would love us to get more um indoor multiple, you know, basketball and volleyball. That's where the fifty million would come in handy. Um, we really, really, really need to improve um Lander's Sports Complex. These are all things that we know we have to do, but we have to have large sums of money to make this happen.
Can I ask a question? Are we still on the uh mission statement or did we move down two more?
We kind of combined it, combined those two together a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, they're they're sort of one in the same.
Yeah, it it, yeah.
More of a general update, I suppose.
Yeah.
And and I think going forward, you know, this, so so you know where we are in our thought process. And you can all, you know, take this home and and sleep on it and have thoughts as well. Um, y- y- you know, the the having this group of people, I think. Take an event um and and plan on it, plan it and work on it from the ground up kind of alone is is a monumental task. And I don't necessarily think that is the purpose of the sports council going forward, but rather helping interested parties, you know, we talked about those people in just interested in tourism. There's people out there who are just interested in in sports as tourism and and things like that as well. So helping helping them, whether it's through funding for bids, helping them write the bids, helping them, you know, learn our. I have a plan to develop a volunteer list that we can pull from. That's a massive part of every event we do. Um, and everybody's kind of on their own, and so having this unifying force between all the communities and volunteers and things like that. Uh, I think it's gonna do wonders for for sports in our community, uh and other other sorts of tourism stuff. Um, but but I d- I don't see the the purpose of this council or commission being to. Uh, like I said, take an event and put it on all on their own. I think it is enabling community members, um other organizations, that kind of thing with what permits do you need? What's what's your funding sources? Uh, like I said, help them write bids, things like that, uh things that we have, our collective group has experience with. Um, and to en- to enable growth i- in the market.
Okay. Getting back to what Russ asked, are are we com- are we combining the next one on the Gearing Sports Council?
Are we on, are we down all three of them?
No, I think, no, 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 well, yeah, we can do the other one too, that's.
Well, I was, I was, I just had some questions about the playbook, so we've had the playbook for, what, fifteen months now? Sixteen months?
Sounds right.
We got it Memorial Day of two thousand twenty three.
Okay.
So just a little over.
Is is that's part of the sports council or is that something separate?
About fourteen months, fifteen months. So how how many people did we presented the playbook to?
The playbook was presented to every single person that was invited to be a part of the interview.
So I talked to um several people that were part of the interview process and they said that they had never seen the playbook.
Then that's because they chose not to come to the the final meeting.
So there was, there was one, there was one final meeting with one presentation for everybody to attend. So if they couldn't make that meeting, they didn't get to see the playbook.
No, but they could have reached out to us and we could definitely have got them a copy.
We could have also reached out to them, possibly. You had a list of who was on that. Is that not appropriate for us to reach out to them?
We did reach out to them. We invited them um to come into the civic center. We paid for a breakfast for them and so.
So one of the, one of the, one of the, the, one of the secondary suggestions in the playbook is to build an indoor facility. With, you know, that could be indoor soccer, volleyball, basketball, um all that sort of stuff. We actually have a group in town who is trying to do this. And the first time they saw the playbook was when I reached out to them and presented them the playbook. She said, my goodness, I I know these people. I've heard of Huddle Up. I didn't even know this playbook existed.
She came to two of our meetings, two of our planning meetings. Yeah, she was there.
She was never, she would. She was there for the interview and the planning, but she had never been presented the playbook. That's all, that's all I'm saying. So what I would like, and then I presented it to Scottsburg Public Schools, they had not seen it yet. Nate Rock was, you know, Western Nebraska Football Club and, you know, Scottsburg High School. Um, he had not seen the playbook. Um, presented, I presented it to him. Um, I presented it to Gearing Public Schools. It's the first time they had seen it. Um, I presented it to three oh eight Pride softball. That was the first time they had seen it. Um, so there, I think, I think what we need to do going forward is is make sure that the pub, that the playbook is presented to all of these folks. Just, you know, not not just a one-time opportunity to come and listen to a group presentation, but deliver the playbook to them. Because they were integral, integral in in getting this thing completed. Um, and a lot of them have plans on implementing things that are in the playbook. And it might, it might, it might tip them off to say, hey, you know, I've always wanted to do this thing, but I didn't know if it was appropriate to ask tourism for this kind of money. But now I've got the backing of this playbook and and maybe tourism will 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 see the the value of my idea because the playbook backs it up. So um I would like to see the playbook presented to more, to more, more people, uh more groups. Um, and uh.
Yeah, I don't think that's our focus on going forward. Like I said, you know, we're we're meant to pull it off this year of Na- Nationals, right? Um, and that's our focus at this point forward and then after we're done with that, I think really setting down and and dividing that vision. And getting the appropriate parties in involved, and I think that's part of that process, right? Um, so, you know, I think that's great, but.
So I I've, just just to let you know, this is kind of where, you know, in the last three weeks, I've presented it to five different groups. So that's what one person's been able to do. I would like to see, I would really like to see, I really like this to be a f- uh a priority.
Brenda, wasn't Dave Hawxworth part of your Huddle Up group or was he not?
Yeah, he was at all the meetings.
And doesn't Nate Rock report to Dave Hawxworth?
Nate was, um, yeah, Nate Rocks, Nate Rock was there as well. He was there through the entire process, so. And we even visited the schools with Huddle Up.
Wow.
Both of their professionals, we walked through all of their schools, we visited the entire facility, so. They definitely knew that we were there and that we um had the playbook coming. I, you know, we spent a lot of time at the schools.
But they but they weren't aware that the playbook was available to them. It never, the playbook had not been shared with them, so.
So maybe that would be his boss's issue too.
That that's all I'm, that's all I'm suggesting, is that we make a deliberate attempt to deliver the handbook to. I don't think that's much to ask.
I guess you gotta know who the stakeholders are.
Yeah.
And. And that changes a lot.
I guess I'm confused because what I'm hearing is some of these people were there but didn't receive the playbook. Is that, would that be a correct statement?
Yeah, so there was a process, uh this this consulting group came to town.
Right.
And they toured facilities and they and they met with stakeholders and then they left and they put together this playbook. And then a couple of months later, they came back, presented the playbook at a meeting at the civic center. Which was attended mostly only by, that that presentation was really only attended by Scottsburg County. which was attended mostly only by, that, that presentation was really only attended by Scottsfield County Tourism and Gearing Tourism.
Were you, were you at the meeting?
I was at the meeting.
You, you were there too.
I was, yeah. Um, and there was, uh, I don't remember any of those other stakeholders who were part of that process, part of that information gathering process, I don't remember them being there, so, you know, maybe they couldn't make it, maybe they were invited, I'm sure they were. Um, but they don't know that the playbook exists today. And when I've presented it to them, they, they say this is the first time I've seen it. So it's, it's just a little, um, you know, I don't, I remember how much we spent to do this, was it thirty thousand bucks, forty thousand bucks?
No, I don't remember, I would have to look, and I was gonna do that, and I'm sorry, I didn't, I, I didn't.
This is probably in that ballpark, though, from what I remember, I think it was forty thousand.
Yeah.
So.
Well, and just so you know, I did present it, um, Matt Carpenter and the Carpenter Center used it um, to do pickleball. So if people have requested it, you bet we've sent it to them. Um, he was even a part of our um, annual planning meeting, and he came in. And he gave us a demonstration about how he used the book and how it helped him, and to get their pickleball courts, so. I mean, we've also had success stories, even though, I mean, I, it, we had a digital copy and absolutely anybody that was a sports planner was more than welcome to it. Um, and yeah, I mean, that's, that's an easy fix. If they want a hard copy, we can give it to them, I also have a digital copy plus the presentation um, from Huddle Up, and they can easily have access to all of that information.
Yeah, that's how I got it, because I couldn't stay at the meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Because it's, it's lengthy, it's big, I mean, you know that, there's a lot of pages, so.
Thirty-six, this is thirty-six pages.
Yeah, it's.
I've read it a couple times.
If I make a good plan, you can't tell people about it enough and remind people and, and reflect that there will be people who
Sure.
didn't see it the first time around for whatever reason, and, and implementing a good plan is making sure we're putting it out there and, and it's getting it to the right, so that's a valid suggestion.
Okay.
Item are we on?
I, I, I'm gonna find out here in a minute. Uh, re- received the report for the Sports Council to Huddle Up Strategic Plan Progress, was that what we were just talking about?
That's what, that's what I was just doing.
Okay, the next one then, Erin, and you're still there.
That's me.
That's you. Discuss and consider September eighth, twenty twenty-four National Highway Grand? Okay, I'm gonna try one more time. Gravel Nationals Highway Seventy-one Lane Closure.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, and I sent copies of this like this afternoon, but I brought a case that we got done.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I forwarded this to you guys this afternoon.
Today? Oh, yeah.
I do have a correction to make, or, or, it's, it's.
I have five minutes of time to look at it, so.
It's set to be announced on September eighth?
Yes.
So it, uh, twenty-four, and so we just need to update it here, if they approve it.
Oh, okay, I hit save and closed it, and, yeah, okay, well, everything's identical, uh, to last year's. Um, that was approved, and so, yeah, we can make that date change real, really easily, but, um.
Thank you.
Does this have a certi- certificate of insurance with it?
Um, I can, it's, it's the county's insurance, so.
What?
It's the county's insurance.
I don't think that's what we do on the other one with, uh, Holyoke.
We did this for the marathon just a couple weeks ago.
What's that?
Yeah, the, the marathon is a, would be a different.
Yeah, they usually finish with a certi-
They use their own certificate.
They give us a certificate of insurance on that.
Right. Right, right.
But this is pretty much what we approved last year also.
Identical, just changed the date.
Just changed the date, okay.
But not all of the dates.
Yeah.
What, what else has changed on it, Kelly?
Just in paragraph six, we need to change twenty-three to twenty-four.
Okay. Was there, I, I, and I, I'm reading this one where we're, we're cutting down to, beginning at six AM, being cone signed for closure out the outside normal driving lane. Sheriff, did that pose any problems at all?
Eyes out, eyes out through all day.
Everything was fine with all of that, okay. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the Gravel Nationals Highway Seventy-one Lane Closure.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Record your votes.
Russ, Mark?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, got you, Mark.
We got a minute.
Oh, man, it was working for a while there, Russ.
I never read this thing, I guess.
Okay. Very good. Thank you for your input and your conversation, and hopefully we can move forward on stuff.
Do you want a digital thing, or do you want copies?
Yeah, I've, I've got a digital, what I'd like to see is just, you know, anyone who was interviewed in that process, if you could just, just reach out to him via phone call, and say, hey, come, come, and I know you're, I know you got a lot going on right now, but if you, you know, if you could say, hey, can you come to the office for thirty minutes, or can I come to your office for thirty minutes and just go over the book? I think that's, that's, that's what's worked for me.
Does everybody have to sign it?
And we've been in here doing property value protests, and I've just jumped over into that room and just said, hey, come sit with, come sit with me for thirty minutes.
Do you need all signatures or just mine?
While we're in between things, I, I just wanna make a comment that I have asked the Tourism Committee multiple times to move their meetings to the evenings to accommodate my schedule, and they will not do it.
Okay, next item is discuss and approve resolution to close Fund Fifteen Hundred, the County Relief, Relief and Poor Fund.
Okay. When I went through my first audit with Kevin Sylvester, one of the comments he made to me is, the county has way too many funds, as far as I'm concerned. Too many, you, but we split our money in too many different little accounts, we don't need to do that, you have an accounting system to accommodate this, these different areas that we have to be, to accommodate. And as I've been reviewing a lot of other county budgets, because we were working a lot through weed control issue in this relief aid fund, like, the majority of the other counties run these specific departments, I'm showing you, that we've built a separate fund for. They run them all through the General Fund, in, in their own specified account. So in, in the essence of helping myself, watch, making sure the, the funds are funded appropriately, and Heather's Department having to move fun, money here, there, and everywhere, let's just keep it all in the General Fund and operate that way. So my first one, I think you just said was relief aid.
Right.
If we could put that as General Fund Account Number Eight Oh One, do you want me to read the resolution as I wrote it?
Please.
Um, Scottsfield County Board of Commissioners wishes to remove Fund Fifteen Hundred County Relief and Medical or the Poor Fund, whereas expenses related to the county relief and medical operations will be paid from the County General Fund One Hundred, Expenditure Code Eight Oh One, named County Relief and Assistance for the Nebraska Accounting Code Manual for Counties. Now for, now therefore be it resolved, the Scots, excuse me, Scottsfield County Board of Commissioners authorize this accounting transfer to simplify management account, county funds, dated this fifteenth day of July at Gearing Nebraska in a regular meeting of the Scottsfield County Commissioners. And this particular fund has been funded ma- from Keno, and what I would do is, once we complete our budget, and say we budget aside sixty thousand dollars for county relief and aid, then we just move the Keno funds into the General Fund, and I should be done for the year.
And that's worth, that's worth it to be paid out of, not this fund anymore?
Yeah, and it also, I, I mentioned Heather and I, and it's, would be at Kelly's office as well, is, I think this would simplify just a few accounting transactions that can't, can get muddy, so, just.
Okay.
So this, um, line item is for that one fund?
Yeah, I've kept them separate, so you could vote separately in case there was a hiccup.
Do I have, do I have a motion for approval of the resolution?
I move the approval of the resolution to close Fund Fifteen Hundred as the resolution presented by Lisa.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Record your votes.
Does it still have an amount basis in there at all?
Oh, you'll still be able to segregate and see exactly what we're spending in the name of county relief and aid.
Yeah, I was just, I was gonna mention, I, where you put it to the nine seven one with this behind it, you can still tell what it is, Russ.
Okay. All right, next item is discuss and approve resolution to close Fund Seventeen Hundred, State Institutions.
Um, same concept, the State Institutions is where we're responsible with some fees, mental health fees for certain residents that are sent to either Lincoln, or Beatrice, or Norfolk. And we pay like ninety-three dollars a month for these, these particular people. And again, I don't know why a separate fund was set up to track this, and what has been happening for the last seven, six, seven years for me, and prior to that is, we moved money from the General Fund to fund seventeen hundred to pay these bills. Why not leave it all in the General Fund and put it in a different account called eight two two Institutions? Same intent, different look, organization, not having to move funds or babysit.
Concerns?
I'm about to sneeze. It's coming.
So I'll move that we adopt, uh, the resolution as presented to remove Fund Seventeen Hundred State Institutions and join it with the General Fund under account.
I'll second that.
Eight two two.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Record your votes.
And Kelly, do I get him to sign mine, or do you have one?
I was gonna just take them all at once.
Okay, I'll say either way.
Okay, the next one.
Russ?
Got you, got you, got you.
Okay.
Next one is discuss and approve resolution to close Fund Fifty Four Hundred, the County Noxious Weed Control.
Again, same, same intent, this is where I saw it mostly, there is a, an account number set up by the State of Nebraska Accounting Code Manual, Department Seven Three Three within the General Fund that's set up called Noxious Weed Control. Rather than having a different fund that we have to babysit, because as you know, we were kind of changing our focus on noxious weeds into more of a, noxious weeds rather than a, oh, help me, what are we, what's, what's the word I want? Rather than doing services to other businesses, we're, we're focusing on getting the noxious weed issue.
We're not doing any contract work.
At this point, we still could, we still can.
Well, we will be. Okay.
We, but you, but the primary intent of this is going to be General Fund mandated, I've still always had to move fun, money from the General Fund to the Fifty Four Hundred Fund in the past, and now we won't have to do that, but you could still do the contract work if.
We can still, well, that's what I'm wondering, are you still gonna be able to be as flexible as we were, because we're gonna be advanced part-time like we're in there and all?
Absolutely, and I think Heather's, Heather has already built accounts separate within the General Fund where she could, if the money comes in, and Steve and his group would have to bring checks in, and we would deposit it in an account called.
It's, it's just, it's like one is weed spraying assess, uh, assessments, and I don't know what the other one is called. But right now, according to the, uh, state auditor's account, there were two for, for three forty, and I added two of those because one of them is not one that's special behind us, we could add that at a later point, right?
But it will, it'll still be named as weed list, because weed something in there.
Yeah.
We show that they're just within the general budget.
Okay.
Because it's one of those ones that the last six months of the times we've had negatives. And so it just tru- it just helps Lisa and I have to do a claim, which us are claims that we're, you know, the clerk's office is doing, and then we're just moving money from one, from the General Fund into a funded back and forth.
So it all stays in the General Fund, or how, just off the bookkeeping, I got you.
But we're still, you can, we'll still have it segregated and have its own department, and you will see this in the budget.
As long as it, as long as it shows its face, that's amazing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have a motion?
I move that we approve the, uh, moving of Funds Fifty Four Hundred, the County Noxious Weed Control into General Fund.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Record your votes.
Before you leave, Lisa, there was a thing we did two weeks ago, you had called and asked us to transfer money, but after three hundred and fifty protests, I don't remember what the count was, you, we moved the money, you had, you called me personally and called the rest of the guys.
I talked to you all, and I think.
What was the account, what was the account we moved that on?
It's all, that was all within the General Fund, it was the county court, and we have, like I said, we have different accounts within the General Fund, and it was moving money from, or moving budget authority, spending authority from the nine seven one to the six two two.
But weren't we supposed to vote, and didn't you tell us we were supposed to have that brought forward and voted on at the next meeting?
Kelly tells me she, you guys did that the very first day.
We did. We did.
Last Monday.
We did?
Yeah.
We did.
You ratified your signatures.
First day protest. Okay, it was on, it was on the agenda.
You got it on the protest.
Russ, I was asking too, thank you for keeping track.
Long as it was done, then.
Okay, next item is discuss and consider the approval of the updated twenty twenty-four, twenty-five Veteran Service Officer Contract with Kimball County.
And I'm sorry, I should have given you guys a copy of this, if you would like a copy, we can address that, but this, Matt Myers works obviously in Scottsfield County, he serves Banner County, but he's also contracted down to Kimball County. Our first interlocal agreement with Kimball County covered up until June of this year. And this is an update, and we increased his fees to go there actually, to one thousand dollars a month for July, August, September, and then after Octo- or, October to the end of the year will be a thousand twenty-five. And we had previously been billing them eight hundred eighty-five dollars a month. So that's where we have to have signatures in order to complete this interlocal from Chairperson of Scottsfield County, Chairperson of Kimball County, and the Veteran Service Committee, and Matt Myers. So this would be just another signature, like I said, I did not get you a copy, but it's not, nothing's changed except the dollar amount from before.
Repeat those amounts one more time, please.
It was pre- up through June twenty twenty-four, it's been eight hundred eighty-five dollars a month.
Okay.
For July, August, September, it is a thousand, and then October through June, it's a thousand twenty-five.
Oh, I missed a whole thing there, thank you.
Okay. Have a motion?
I move that the, approve the amounts, uh, for the Veteran Service Officers' Contract at Kimball, Banner County.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
That, it's just Kimball County.
It's just Kimball County, yeah, and they, they match his mileage directly, that's not included in this.
Right.
Okay. Any other discussion? Record your votes.
And Kelly, I have a contract here for him.
Okay.
I have one that he needs to sign here, okay? I'll go get you a copy.
You know I don't.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, sirs.
Move on to whole business? Is there some way we can get that taken off, guys, or do you wanna just continue talking about it?
Well, I asked to put it.
I, he, you guys said to keep it there.
Okay.
Then you asked me to take it off, and I asked you to please not make me remember to put it back.
All right, it's back on.
Well, I never took it off, because I asked if I could leave it.
It's fine, we're not talking about it anyway.
There's no update.
Time clock, time clock plus and payroll process.
Okay.
What do we know about the window?
About what?
The clerk's window.
Jay's not here, I don't have any idea where.
I, it's progressing as normal, I don't know anything about the clerk's window.
Okay.
I think he's been.
Okay. Uh, time clock plus and payroll process.
Okay, had a meeting with TCP here a week ago, and we, are we are getting an integration from TCP. It's pretty much been, there's been a model, a, a module set up, but we are going to integrate into MIPS, and to build this integration is like just under four thousand dollars, and we can start testing our small departments. So we are moving forward with the process to integrate.
And we have, you have. And we have, you haven't had a personnel board meeting to discuss whether you're going to stay with monthly or go bi-weekly or whatever.
No, um, August, the end of August, we had to move it because of.
We pushed it back a month.
Yeah, we had some conflicts.
Need a break, do you?
I don't know what happened, it was these guys.
What's that?
He was wondering if I needed a break from that personnel.
Can I ask you a question under old business?
Under old business?
Yeah, can I, I mean, can I get Kurt, Kurt Richter up to talk about that fuel deal under old business where it's not listed?
Uh, he can talk to it under board and staff reports.
That'll be fine, just hang on, we'll get you up here.
All right, now we're under public comments, the Board of Commissioners. This time we see public comments on items discussed at this meeting or suggestions for items of discussion at a future meeting. Understand that no action will be taken on any of the discussion. Is there anybody that wishes to speak from the board as far as the public is concerned?
Good evening, sir. Good evening. President Preston, three seven one nine, five Oaks Drive, Scottsbluff. All right, good night, or good evening, gentlemen, thanks again for your time as always. I'm here to continue to address the county's moratorium against renewable energy conditional use permit applications. Picking up where we left off at the last meeting, Mr. Knapper referred to a USA Today article as reasonable proof. Counties across the country have authority to place moratoriums on renewable energy. Uh, while the newspaper article is certainly not a legal authority, it is an interesting read specifically on Lynn County, Iowa, who seems to have efficiently and expeditiously moved through what I think Scottsbluff County would like to establish. With some obvious differences between Iowa and Nebraska's land productivity, uh, it could serve as a great model to save some time and expense in this county to set up what Scottsbluff County would like to have. Additionally, in the last meeting, Mr. Harris pointed out, uh, that Nebraska is a powers assigned state, it's called the Dillon Rule. Uh, state legislature grants your authority in chapter twenty-three, the statute stacked as a county board describes what you can do, shall do, should do, uh, leaves generally absent what you should not do because it's implied your authority is only as it is expressly granted. In other words, uh, it, it tells you what you can do as a county board expressly. And up to this point, since I started asking, uh, this board has been unable or unwilling, uh, to defend its use of a moratorium as an instrument to prohibit the application of conditional use permits. And then from a message from Mr. Knapper two weeks ago, uh, the NACO team referenced an attorney general opinion on the matter of moratorium use. Uh, NACO was likely referring to an opinion from nineteen ninety-seven, it's the only one that's even relevant. And it's on the topic of construction of certain types of hog confinements for the legislature. Uh, like the USA Today article, also an interesting read, uh, also like USA Today's article, it certainly doesn't apply to the county because the AG doesn't serve counties in that particular capacity. Uh, but if, just as a thought experiment, Mr. Eubanks constructed a same or similar opinion for you, uh, in the county's language, I don't think the county would even be able to satisfy the factors that they laid out. So now here we are at six months and two weeks into the moratorium. Uh, it appears to lack any basis in law and we haven't heard any further discussion from the board or the county attorney. So in conclusion tonight, if you feel unsatisfied, operating the county government based on a USA Today level report or example, I strongly encourage your very next agenda to include a consideration to retract the moratorium, which cannot or has not yet been defended. Thanks.
Can I comment on that?
Absolutely.
So I, you should know that, um, the very next morning after our commissioner meeting two weeks ago, I did speak with Bill Maven. Uh, and, uh, Bill said that he had been working on the policies and procedures, um, that we had asked him to be working on. He told me that, um, generally speaking, when they start to change things in the, um, zoning or other regulations, um, that normally they bring together a committee from the planning commission and they, he had done that and they have worked on it some. Um, how much exactly, I don't know. And I told him that the commissioners were certainly in favor of them expediting that process. And we also, um, gave him authority, um, to hire and use, we hire, he u, to use Phil Kelly as a, um, attorney to help him put all of that process together. I also spoke to Phil Kelly then, that same morning and told Phil of our concerns. I also mentioned to him the, um, uh, document that Kyle Long had presented to us and that that needed to be addressed. Um, Bill Maven told me that, um, uh, he thought he already had that information prepared. And I asked him to be sure and run it past Phil Kelly first. I don't know whether Phil has talked to Kyle Long, but they did talk about working on it within the next two to three days. And that was, of course, the week of the Fourth of July, so exactly where they're at on it, I, I can't tell you. But there was more being done on it than what I thought. And, um, we have encouraged Bill to expedite things and we've asked Phil Kelly to be part of it. And to be sure that when we get something put together that, uh, Phil has given his blessing before it comes to this group. And so I think we're making more progress than I thought we were last, the last time we talked. I know that there's also, uh, was some discussion about some of the regulations, rules and regulations that Goshen County had, uh, put into effect or at least has been working on. And, um, I mentioned that to them, um, that not only what they've already done, but that might also be used as a, uh, maybe a guide as to some of the things that should be considered. So that's what I know of right now. So we've, we've made some progress.
Thanks for the update, uh, as a, just a cautionary note, because I'm following Goshen as well, they have an industrial siting council in Cheyenne. The, the scheme is a little different, Goshen County has considerably less authority, if you can believe it, than you have here. So it's not quite the same ballgame, but similar concept, I suppose.
Okay, thank you for your comments, appreciate it.
And one other thing I might also mention, and that's that, you know, Bill Maven has not been here, um, for some of this stuff that is mentioned. And he said, well, I didn't even know you were gonna talk about it because it wasn't on the agenda. And I said, yep, these have been talked about at the bottom of the page under, um, public comments. Um, but if I should assume that we'll be here on a regular basis, maybe I should have him, um, either be in touch with you to know whether or not he should be here, but he could be here if we need him.
Well, like I asked for the agenda item for the next one, for the moratorium specifically, if you want to construct that to be the big broader topic. Certainly, uh, I think I've got a fantastic attendance record in twenty twenty-four so far, I don't think I've missed any yet, so we'll see in a couple of weeks.
Okay, well, if it's on the agenda, he'll be here, I'm sure, I'll remind him.
Kelly, can you make a note of that, please? Thank you.
What's the agenda item gonna say?
Discussion, discussion of the moratorium. I think.
What's the agenda item gonna say?
I'm proposing that you discuss, uh, consider to discuss the moratorium that, uh, hasn't been defended. That's what I'm asking for, but the entire topic is fruitful, I think, for the zoning ordinance.
Maybe we could have Phil.
We're not gonna, he's done his research. We're not gonna vote it down every meeting.
Maybe Phil can be here as well.
We better have, I don't, yeah, I don't think we want to vote, I don't think we want to vote on a moratorium.
Well, we're not gonna vote on anything until we hear.
It's discussion on the moratorium.
Discussion's fine.
Right. All right.
Okay, anybody else? Yes, well, we're, we're not under board and staff yet, hang on. Anybody else from the public? Okay, now move on to board and staff, we'll start with Russ.
I don't have anything other than we're not quite finished up on County Road Five, uh, that, uh, Box Culver, we're waiting for Riker construction to finish a few things for the irrigation district. And, uh, as soon as that's approved, we should have that done, that's probably about all we've got right now.
Okay, Mike?
Uh, we met with the, uh, I met with the, one of the county commissioners from Banner County, uh, fire chief from Scottsbluff, Bob Hessler, the chairman of the Region Twenty-two Board. And we went through and, uh, selected, uh, several candidates for emergency management position. We'll be meeting, uh, Thursday morning at nine thirty with the Region Twenty-two Board, we'll inform them of our, our candidates and then we'll have a interview with them later to select the candidate and, uh, we have some very good candidates.
Let me ask you a question here. Or maybe Lisa is even better. That's a county position, do you discuss salary with this individual or do you go through the personnel part?
No, that goes with Lisa does, we use some standards.
We, we have them on a, the salary scale.
So they know, these candidates know what the salary is?
I don't, do they already?
They will know when they come.
Yes.
And that, and you're getting that information from Lisa?
Yes.
Okay. All right, uh, I, I didn't have any meetings, just for the, for those of you that don't know, we have been in tax protests. We have nine hundred tax protests that we're going through. We started last week, uh, anywhere from twelve, a couple of times or thirteen hour days, except for Friday, we were out of here.
Don't forget that fifteen hour day, that one was brutal.
That was a good one. And, uh, and we're starting another week of them this week and they will extend into Wednesday of next week. So if you want to know if your commissioners are busy, yes, we are. We get up, we come here, then we go home and go to bed, then we get up and we come here and go home, go to bed. Uh, so it's been, I, I, I wouldn't say brutal, but very taxing on everybody when you have that many folks that are, that are concerned.
Brutal's not such a bad word.
Well, no, you don't want to say that because that's, you know, it's, it's taxing and it, and it's tough. When you're looking, when you're scheduling nine hundred people to talk to and you say the same thing pretty much over and over to each one of them to make the explanations of why, whatever happened to their particular taxes.
Multi-parceled property owners are pretty difficult.
Yeah, we get, we get, we get, some will show up with twenty-two parcels and they want to protest every one of them.
Fifteen minutes to do it.
Yeah, fifteen minutes to do it and usually right before lunch. So there goes your lunch.
Hopefully you're hungry and.
Yeah, get her done, okay. So the, anyway, that's what we have been doing, Mark?
Uh, since our last meeting, our, my primary things has been the Bill Maven and Phil Kelly things. I've missed a couple of my normal monthly meetings last week because of protests and I'm gonna miss at least one more on Thursday that's because of protests, but that's all I can tell you.
Okay, well, I missed the last tourism meeting because we were hearing protests. Um, did get a, uh, email update from how that meeting went. Um, one of the things that came out of there was to possibly do another, uh, strategic plan, um. I think we did one in twenty twenty-one, we did the sports plan in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, so this would be the third one in four years, um, but that would be more of a, a all encompassing plan, not just sports. The one that was done in twenty-one was just like a refresh of an old one, um, so we're talking about doing that. I don't know, did you get a, any quotes on that one yet or?
Uh, no, the, the last time, no, um, but the last one was done February seventh, two thousand eighteen. So some of the items that were in there were updated, so it's actually been, uh, quite a while and in our industry, they suggest, um, every five years just because there are so many trends and so many different things that change and so many new people move to the community, different ideas for events come up. So it's recommended that we do it, um, we kind of feel like.
But we did do a, we refreshed that one in twenty twenty-one.
We refreshed one in, in two thousand twenty-one, but quite honestly, we feel we just don't. I mean, there's just not much luck we can do with it, we feel like we need more direction.
Okay, and the, uh, oh, the NACO group met, uh, talking about the governor's, uh, property tax reform work group with those seventeen senators. Um, he was informed today that the special session is dead on arrival, uh, based on the plan he put out, which was interesting. From what I can tell from the article, they want to get rid of homestead exemptions, uh, which I believe counties would, um, oppose. Um, you know, I think we just see the homestead exemptions are so important for so many of, of our, um, older citizens and veterans and disabled, uh, you know, that homestead exemption is just so important to allow people to stay in their homes rather than getting taxed out of their homes.
Right.
Um, and we, we see it multiple times a day here, um, and we will continue to see it multiple times a day for the next week and a half, so, um, I thought that was kind of disheartening, um. The NACO group, I did ask the NACO group to take a position on, uh, the governor's uh, K through twelve funding idea and NACO would not take a position on it. Um, so, uh, he'll have to fight that one by himself, I guess, well, at least not with the help of NACO. Um, but I think that the, the position is neutral from NACO, um, but that might even be a stretch to call it neutral. Um, TCD did express, uh, TCD and the chamber both expressed, and this was not me reaching out, okay? This was TCD reaching out to me, um, asking if there would be any appetite for TCD to take over tourism. They have been working on collaborating more with, uh, the chamber. And there's a few people, uh, kind of pushing this thing together that asked me if, uh, they believe that, you know, um, tourism should be, uh, combined with the efforts of TCD and the chamber, and I'm not comfortable doing that. And I like, I kind of like how it's set up now, so, um, the, uh, but maybe there would be more discussions, but I, I don't expect to have more discussions on that.
Is the tourism group aware of what you just said?
No.
Okay, they are now.
They are now. Um, I, I don't know if it was really, I mean, maybe if, if they would want to, I guess I could suggest it to them. I just, I just assumed they would, they like how things are running now based on other comments they've made, so they wouldn't want to fall under TCD or the chamber. State statute, state statute does allow us to contract with multiple individuals, agencies, five oh one C threes, uh, to fulfill the, the statutes related to the Ma, Nebraska Visitors Act. Um, but we're taking care of all those here with, with the way it's set up now, keeping it underneath the county's umbrella. Um, so, I think that's all I got, I guess I did have a question on that bridge, is there, is there a provision in there to, for, you know, if they don't complete the project in a certain amount of time, are they, do they always?
We didn't put a time limit on it, but we did, but we're holding a hundred and fifty thousand dollar money right now. Payment to where, we're gonna more uncover it, but we just can't seem to get them off center to do the job.
Now, do we, now the, the, the this gospel caring highway bridge may be more important to have that performance.
It does have a time, it's time, it'll be timed. That's in there about.
Okay, uh, staff, Lisa, do you have anything?
I do, I do. Um, I attended a regional governance meeting last week and I'm gonna throw this out there because I, we got to tour this WBC building. This gospel public schools was our, our tour guide or was our host. And I'm saying this here because they have tons of office chairs, to, cubicles galore. So if we need cubicles, I don't know if you're needing some or not, what? Oh, are you? And say, I hope we didn't buy them because we had them for almost free there, what? Oh, did you? Okay.
I took stuff from the clerk of the district court's office.
Yes, you did, so as long as we're sharing, but they have, and storage racks galore, that'll probably be.
Are they selling it or?
They'll probably be selling it, but at a premium, I mean, it's gonna be good deals. Because they have more than they'll ever use.
Okay.
So, anyway, they have a lot of space, they're gonna be doing some good stuff, they're mainly looking at the mid-first main floor and figuring out second floor later, yes, ma'am.
Did you get to see the furniture?
Yes.
And so you've seen how we store marriage records in my office? Sideways in a hard, kind of cardboard thing?
And your office here? I mean, I'm talking racks and those little, anyway, we can talk, Kelly.
Yeah, yeah, racks and racks and racks for standard files, but they might work for what you need. I've seen it too.
Okay.
Anyway, just throwing that out there. And can you give me a preliminary idea, which, you, when do you want to hold budget meetings? And do you want to meet with everybody? And, because I know you're three weeks here with, well, almost three, with protest. Do we hit it the week of the twenty-ninth? I know you've got meetings that day. What's gonna accommodate you all?
What would you like to do? Do you want to meet with everybody, or just the larger budgets?
Let's see where they come in, and then, and then, then decide if we need to meet with everybody.
Well, we'll see where they come in. I've got to receive them all. I've asked for them.
Put the message out there, what our goals were, and let's see if they can.
Okay. And go from there, because, yeah, we could also do it even as late as the second week of August, we just, if it's not bad, right?
It's not a good time to ask right now.
Are you meeting now?
A little bit.
I under- I understand that. All right.
Anything else, Lisa?
No, that's all I can think of right now. Thank you.
I have a report for you on the topic of distress warrants. Most exciting thing that, this is something that really excites the deputy sheriff when they get those distress warrants. But distress warrants is what you do when personal property taxes are not paid. So on November first, twenty twenty-three, treasurer handed us three hundred and thirty distress warrants in the amount of two hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and twelve cents. Between then and now, they've recalled eight warrants, and we have collected two hundred and ninety-four. It actually totals more than the original, two hundred and forty-three, eight eighty-eight. So there's, so we've returned twenty-eight uncollected warrants in the amount of four thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars. This is kind of a record for us, Jeff has done a fabulous job. I have a list of all the uncollected ones, some of which are nine dollars. The lowest one is nine dollars, sixteen dollars. A lot of these are trailer houses, those things we can't find. The most ex- the biggest one is Sherry's Management Corporation that no longer exists in this county. We can't find anything to attach.
What's the name of it?
Sherry's.
Sherry's Restaurant.
Sherry's Restaurant. Eight hundred and sixty-two dollars, and none of the rest are that big. And there's a lot of these where we've tried to sell property, and it won't sell.
Nobody wants to, nobody wants.
Yeah.
And we're stuck with it.
Yeah, we have nineteen dollars, and, well, there's enabled it. There's property demolished, property demolished. Owners deceased, and the trailer's no longer there. There's one for a hundred and seventy dollars, property didn't sell. Hundred and twenty-one dollars, property didn't sell. Lots of property demolished, so anyhow, I can give you a copy of this, you can see for yourself, but that's where deputies did a really good job on.
Yes, I think.
He's presenting something that I will be presenting at the August end of meeting. I'm waiting for the assessor's office to take a look at. Ninety percent of those trailers that are on that list still have a current tax statement for twenty twenty-three, which needs to be looked at before those distress warrants can be gotten rid of. Because there's no sense in you striking at something that you're gonna turn around and issue another distress warrant for next year.
Good, thank you. Is that it, Mark?
All right.
Kurt, do you have anything?
Well, quickly, on getting everybody paid back, I am waiting on payment for May now. It's been submitted, so we're back to kind of where we always were, about two months behind in submitting our invoices to the state for reimbursement. So before the end of the fiscal year, I was able to get everybody paid back. I have training actually in August, or in, in August in Lincoln to go over the new invoicing requirements. And, and that's when we'll pick some battles to, to maybe argue about some extraneous documentation that really proves nothing. But with regard to the fueling station that Russ had asked about, we did have an issue with the key fob reader on the door, we had a bad reader. Jay and his staff got that replaced. It is working now. We got all the cards set up, we got all the vehicles in the system, we got everybody, all the employees in the system. We went out today to test it, and there's apparently some settings in the software, it's asking us to scan a second card. Once we've got a call in, a help call in for the gentleman that's helping us with that, the software company, we hope to hear from him tomorrow. If we can get that glitch figured out in that language, maybe tomorrow or by Wednesday, we will be distributing key fobs and the key cards, the actual fuel cards, to each department, so we can start using it hopefully this week yet.
Very good.
That answer your question, Russ, or?
Yeah, I'm a little disappointed in the timeframe.
Yes, and it, it's been this, we're dealing with the manufacturer of the fueling stuff, and then a separate company for their software, and then their, their communication, like, I did kind of let them know that their communication via email is very vague. We, apparently there was two different meetings, we did, we didn't know it was two different meetings. One's to activate the system, and one's to train us how to use the actual reporting software. It's like, it said that nowhere in your emails, that these are two separate meetings, folks, you need to do a little better job.
Makes it harder to organize.
Well, are you by your fuelings facility now? Uh, no, I'm at my desk right now. I don't have a fuel pump right next to my desk. Just some silly stuff that we, that we have conversations with them, that just, but Jay had a, he has an early appointment to repair the air conditioner at the courthouse tomorrow, but we're hoping to be able to work with the gentleman from the, the software company to get that, those settings tweaked tomorrow. And then everything else is already divided up. I have lists of vehicles, car numbers, what they go in, and we just have to get those to each department. And once we have the system in place, we'll probably, probably detention center, maybe sheriff's office, will find a, a staff member that will give admin control to, to be able to add and delete vehicles, and add and delete employees. The smaller departments, Jay and I will probably just handle on our own.
Very good. Okay, thank you, Kurt. Brenda, do you have anything else?
It'll be quick, it's easy. Okay, so actually, you know, keeping our current strategic plan in mind, number two is to promote special events. And our number three priority is to attract tourists interested in history and culture. So keeping that in mind, we purchased from growing small town Nebraska podcast, two podcast series. And they'll be approximately twenty minutes each, you know, it just depends how the person interviews, of course. And one of them is going to be on preserving the history of Old West Balloon Fest and also Japanese Hall. So the Old West Balloon Fest one was just recorded last week, and it takes her a little while, of course, to get them going. When that one is released, I will definitely get you an email so that everybody has something to do while you're traveling. And then the Japanese Hall one will not, we will not record that one until just a little bit later on in the fall. I wanted to get the Old West Balloon Fest one done quickly and out so that people could still choose this as a destination for an event in August to come and see the balloons.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Heather? Okay, we're all the way around. Jackie, do you have anything?
Not very well.
All right, you talk too softly.
I'm sorry. Our new four-H assistant started June third, just in time for fair. So our fair planning is well underway, it's all hands on deck. And we're looking forward to having this new staff member join us. And looking forward to fair, not looking forward to the heat. Commissioner Blue has already declined our meeting for tomorrow. Understand why, but that's about it. We're getting fully staffed again, so that's a really great thing.
Thank you. Kelly, you're last. Anything?
We're expecting to receive our first petition to verify signatures probably tomorrow. We didn't get them today. I was hoping, and then we have forty dot, forty days to check signatures, but we'll have more petitions coming in. You guys probably know who any more better than me right now. I can't even, can't even keep track, but.
Okay. All right. With that, we have an executive session for the purpose of personnel issue. Charlie, who, who do we want in the, Lisa and who else? The board?
Uh, the board and Brenda.
And Lisa?
Yep, Lisa, yeah.
Okay. So I have an executive session at, I need a motion to move in the executive session at seven ten. I need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Record your votes. Okay.
Mark?
Mark?
Yeah.
It didn't go, but.
Well, we can.
There you go. All right, I'm gonna stop there first.
Yeah. I was.
I know, I, I was. Every time I saw somebody got up, I know where they were going. And I was jealous.
Pretty nice having time up here all day. Okay, um, if I'm not here, I do have my.
All of us are here. All right, we're back in regular session. Okay, okay. Don't holler at me, I'm tired of hollering. Enough, enough. You ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, back in regular session at eight twenty-seven.
I'll do roll call. Meyer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Knapper? Reitzig?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Any decisions?
No. Okay, we're adjourned. Tomorrow morning at nine, is that our first one?
I believe so.
Okay. What's that?
I was gonna look real quick and verify.
Well, it, it, it won't be before nine, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't have a nine fifteen. But it is at nine.
Okay.